Okay. Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two. Time for our second regular meeting of this month. At this time, we're going to have the invocation and Mr. Blair is up and he is asked to have someone do this. So you want to introduce your guest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As my designated prayer tonight, let's stand Pastor Crystal Spriggs, Association Pastor and Heritage Memorial Church. I appreciate it.
Yes, Pastor, we're glad you're here. Then Christine is going to lead us in the pledge because Kendra's had it.
I'm here, yes.
So after that, you can lead us. Go ahead, Pastor.
Yes. I'd like to read a scripture to all of us tonight. Second Thessalonians one eleven says, "We constantly pray for you that our God may count you worthy of his calling and that by his power he may fulfill every good purpose of yours and every act prompted by your faith." Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this council. We thank you for their service to the community. And Lord, I just pray, we know that you have a good purpose for them to fulfill tonight. So I just pray a special blessing upon all decisions that are coming up and that their discussion will also be led by their care for this community and that you will just guide out all of the discussions tonight that they will make good decisions that would pack this community in a positive way. We just ask for your blessing upon tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Christine.
It's very nice to have a guest come in and do that. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Should we take a vote about whether she or her husband did a better?
I'll defer to him.
You did a great thing. Okay, roll call, Kelly.
Johnson?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Blair?
Here.
Christman?
Here.
Hawk? Hernandez? Lynch?
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Hawk.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Make a motion that we excuse Ms. Hernandez.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. And Kendra may come in at some point. I wonder if Son's game is over. Okay, we have the approval of minutes from our regular council meeting on May eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Does anybody see any changes that needed to be made? And I do, Kelly. On the last page, you said that I moved to adjourn, and I don't make motions. It was Mr. Christman according to my notes. And Mr. Schultz did second.
I did second, yes.
But it was not me, it was Mr. Christman. But with that change, does anybody have any other?
I think I have one here on the first page.
Okay.
It said, "Mr. Hawk presented the minutes of the finance personnel committee." That was me.
Yes, it was. Thank you. I missed that one. Any others?
Well, with those changes, I'll move that we approve the minutes from the five, was it the eleventh of May?
Yes, I second that.
All right, and roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Denon, do we have any communications?
None.
Okay, report of council committees. We have Service Safety and Recreation, which is Mr. Hawk, but he's not here, so the vice chair, Mr. Johnson, is going to read those.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at six P M. Mr. Ted Hawk presided and those in attendance were myself, council member, Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Ron Socken, service director, Mr. Jeff Fenari, police chief, Mr. Joe Denon, city manager, and Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney. Number one, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Police Department. Chief Fenari noted that four officers had become certified licensed pilots for the department's new drone program. Chief Fenari advised of the benefits of the program for the city. Chief Fenari noted that the drone had been used for a recent service department project. Number two, the committee benefited from a report of the recent traffic speed study completed by the digital mobile speed sign on Washington Avenue. No significant speeding issue was found. Number three, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Fire Department given by Mr. Denon. The administration advised the committee that a wage increase would be allocated for the volunteer firefighters by mid-June. Number four, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Service Department. The committee noted that the street department would begin signage changes and advertising regarding the implementation of the traffic changes at Temple Street and Veterans Way. Number five, the committee discussed a request to review the option of removing the right turn only at the intersection of Lincoln and Columbus Avenue. The committee recommended that the intersection remain unchanged at this time. Number six, the administration advised the committee of a request to make Temple Street and Paint Street intersection a four-way stop. The committee recommended that the intersection remain unchanged at this time. Number seven, the committee noted that the fitness and splash pad construction of Washington Park would be completed later than Memorial Day. This differs from the earlier estimated completion of Memorial Day. Number eight, the committee noted that the use of the parks by citizens and an increase in reservations for shelter houses. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Ted Hawk, chairperson, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Number four, the signage change at Temple Street and Veterans Way, how soon will that be taking effect?
We've already started that.
I was coming through this morning and there was no signage up.
There were two signs that I noticed, not from the side of our, you know, where we live, but the other side, if you come, and I believe on both sides it says, "Do not enter." And I actually almost got caught up in that. I started to go through because I didn't notice those until later. But I don't believe anything was painted on the road yet.
We haven't done that yet.
Okay, I came into a side probably wouldn't have known. Well, shouldn't it say one way coming in or something?
We'll take a look at what we've done up there.
If there's something more you want to add.
I didn't see it, okay. Thank you.
Any other kind of five?
I come Wilson Street a lot of times to Columbus Avenue and there is a right turn, or no right turn sign up there. I think those were put up when we widened the street to, what, fifteen, eighteen years ago, to five lanes. And we were told at that time that states said we had to leave them up there, both of them, from Columbus, or from Lincoln and Wilson, unless there'd been a change in traffic count or something. Also, I got a little confused on six. I did figure out where Temple and Paint come together, I think.
Yeah, where is that?
Because Temple and Paint run parallel.
They run parallel each other.
Yeah, they can't come together.
Is it Temple Market or Temple and?
I believe Temple.
Or doesn't Paint curve around and hit by that glass shop?
It does.
Is that what it is?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at my notes.
Yeah, maybe that's what you're, I forgot about that rule.
Well, that took me a while and I thought, well, that does curve around there, so maybe it's still Paint Street.
Oh, okay, that's where it's at then.
However, I don't know how you make it four-way when there's only three ways there.
Yeah. That's a good point.
So those are minor changes, questions, but comments, whatever. Thank you.
Anything else?
This is spelling on that one word there on number six, remain unchained. Unchained.
What is it? It is unchained.
It is unchained.
Unchained chain there. I couldn't resist it.
I'll open the chain up right away.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to accept that report?
I do.
You?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
I'll second it since he pointed out the unchained part.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
And Lynch?
Yes.
Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. With the end of the school year approaching, please remember that children will be moving around the community during the day and you might not be that accustomed to that. So you need to drive with a little bit of extra caution and remember that you will have children out and about. Please, and you'll hear this for a while, mow your grass. It makes the neighborhood look better and we don't have to take enforcement action. It's just a better, happier world. Along with that, if you could pick up your trash, that would make things tremendously easier also. Would like to thank the Washington Cemetery for their efforts that they've been making with Memorial Day. The weather has not been horribly cooperative, but it has made lovely green grass out there. Unfortunately, it continues to want to grow. But we have been making every effort to make sure that cemetery is nice and presentable for the Memorial Day weekend. I would like to thank the street departments for their efforts with the flags downtown and the veterans banners in the downtown area. That looks very nice and we're very pleased with that. Would like to thank Mr. Steve Armstrong and every citizen involved with the flag effort around the community. That is a wonderful thing. Memorial Day program at the Old Washington Cemetery is at noon. The Old Washington Cemetery is the one behind Dairy Queen or in front of the deli, however you want to think about it. But there is a small program there Friday at noon and then the traditional program at Washington Cemetery is Memorial Day at ten o'clock. I tried the new hot head burrito and if you pick all the hot options and you're bald, your top of your head does break out in a little bit of sweat. But congratulations to them. New legislation, you have legislation that allows us to codify, to update the ordinance book, okay, to go through codification. And then you have legislation that permits a enterprise zone agreement with Make, Build, Ship, which is a entity that would locate out in the industrial park. Our interest with that is that it would serve a lot of the warehousing needs of folks out in the industrial park, which is keenly in demand. And that is why we have, after consultation with committee, brought the piece of legislation forward and we are very happy that we can move along with that. That concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions for the city manager?
I had a question from a citizen on Fayette Street about, is it, paint cricket runs in behind there? If there would ever be a way of dredging it out a little bit, cleaning it up? I don't know what they really were referring to.
Dredging the channel or the?
Because it does flood up into some of the yards along there and they think it's coming from the pink. But I told him there's a lot of water here lately, so I don't know if any dredging or anything would even help that.
Yeah, if... Do you know the block of Fayette we're talking about or?
Right over the bridge, out there, over the bridge, right along there to the left.
I mean, we can take a look at that. Just dredging the section of the creek directly adjacent to the property is likely even accomplish a lot.
Okay.
But we can look at all the bank conditions there and see if some modifications there can make a little bit of a difference for them. Because a lot of times you end up with, oh, stuff that gets caught up in the bank. Like in the committee report you just read, the project that the police department's drone helped us out with was identifying a number of log jams in the creek that we're going to have to haul out of there. And some of them are actually a little bit of beaver activity. But there is some considerable collections of stuff that we need to haul out of there. But if you talk to them, if we could have a, we'll go down and look at that area along the bridge there.
I appreciate that.
Anything else for Mr. Denon? Somebody want to make? Oh, we don't need to. Okay. Director of Finance, do you want to make a report?
Well, I'm happy to say we have a consistent inflow of cash, so we have a pretty, we're in a pretty good cash position right now. Our general fund has a balance of two point six million dollars at this time. And the only other thing I probably want to address is that we have some securities and some investments with U.S. Bank and Fifth Third. So I'm continuing to keep an eye on those with the stock market fluctuating up and down a lot to see if we want to leave the funds in there, maybe move them somewhere a little more stable, so I think that's it.
Any questions to the finance?
Income tax collections, have they been pretty good?
Yes. Yeah, they've been coming in pretty steadily.
Okay.
Good news?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And city attorney?
Well, as always, I appreciate Mr. Denon's comments about people mowing the yard, but it doesn't seem to be happening. We had about eighty properties that we flackered this last week and mowed about forty-five, so we just need to keep mowing.
Wow.
I would like Mr. Denon to get it to stop raining. I would mow more often.
Weather is a chamber problem.
Yeah, okay.
Now, what is it we charge to mow those?
Two hundred fifty dollars.
Charge them to fifty?
Minimum.
Buy a whole mower for that, didn't you?
Then what, you have to use the mower?
Well, that's a good point.
Doesn't do any good sitting in the garage.
All right, we are ready for local residents and taxpayers and we have one local resident who wants to speak to us this evening. If you would come up, state your name and your address for the record. I would appreciate it and you can tell us whatever.
Oh, it's funny, you should do lawns because that's why I'm here. Natalie Wentworth, three thirty-six Rawling Street, right around from the old high school. My concern is four oh three North North Street and I brought pictures to pass around. You cannot walk on the sidewalk in front of this house. It's all overgrown. You can't push a baby carriage down it. You can't walk without tripping. And their yard is absolutely atrocious and everything hangs over the sidewalk if they're, if you could walk on the sidewalk. So I bought pictures and if you want to pass them around, and you can keep these.
Oh, thank you.
So, and I put the houses on both sides, but it's all overhang and sidewalk overgrowth and this is, this is from, I've been trying to get this done for a year because I called the city about it and they didn't do anything about it. So, and I know because I walk my, my baby carriage and I have to walk on the other side of the street to get down there. And you go around the corner and it's the same. The house is on a corner.
What's the address again?
Four oh three North North Street.
Four oh three.
It's catty-cornered across from the old high school.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a yellow house. And you can hardly see the house number. I had to, it's way up top and it's all blurred, so I took a picture of the house on each side so you'd know where exactly where it was and the sign, the street sign, so it's on the corner, so you could find it easily.
Okay, I do let the right people know, so.
And I appreciate that. I will say that this is one of the houses that we have been looking at for several years. The issue is what is noxious, noxious weeds and grass. The issue, there's a lot of overgrown bushes and items on the property, but there's a lot of flowers involved too. That's a question that we've, we've struggled with at times. What, what should be mowed and what is in fact flowers? And that's a good question. We'll look at it. I haven't been out there this year.
Well, the sidewalk is my concern because you can't walk on it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
My word, thank you for coming in. Appreciate that. Okay, legislation. And first of all, that has been previously introduced. And first is Resolution number R sixteen, twenty twenty-two. It is second reading.
I'll move that we put Resolution R sixteen, twenty twenty-two on second reading.
Second.
Discussion.
This is the property where the new car wash is going in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution concerning services to property proposed for annexation of point zero, or I'm sorry, zero point eight eight seven acres, parcel number one nine zero dash zero zero twelve dash zero dash zero zero dash zero zero nine dash zero zero, from Union Township Fayette County to the City of Washington Courthouse, Ohio.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Next is Resolution number R seventeen, twenty twenty-two. It also is second reading.
I'll move we put Resolution R seventeen, twenty twenty-two on second reading.
Second.
A discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R seventeen dash two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution expressing the appreciation of the City of Washington Courthouse of the Fayette County Garden Club and recognizing the one hundredth anniversary of the Fayette County Garden Club.
And before, I just want to mention, I should have said this before. I went out that day, I think Joe, you may have too.
Yeah.
And saw the ladies there and had a piece of cake and visited with them and they were very appreciative that we were doing this and it was a very nice little program and so on, so anyway. Now.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R eighteen, twenty twenty-two, also second reading.
I'll make a motion that we put Resolution number R eighteen, twenty twenty-two on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R eighteen dash two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, to supply Liquid Hills with water through an agreement with Fayette County.
Move for adoption. Second.
Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Then going to our new legislation, ordinance number four, twenty twenty-two, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance number four, twenty twenty-two, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number four dash two thousand and twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, or his designee to enter into a prize zone agreement with Make, Build, Ship LLC.
Ordinance number five, twenty twenty-two, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance number five, twenty twenty-two, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number five dash two thousand and twenty-two, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Washington Courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio.
Thank you, Kelly. We're too miscellaneous. Mr. Johnson, what have you got?
Um, not too much. I just thank Pastor who came in and gave a lovely prayer, I thought. That was very enjoyable. And also Natalie Wentworth, correct? Thank you, Natalie, for coming in and letting us know and thank you for the pictures as well. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, what have you got?
Well, thank you, Natalie, for coming in and showing us that and bringing that to our attention. We do appreciate you showing up. We appreciate all citizens that show up and let us know what's going on in their neighborhoods, so we do appreciate that. And outside that, I want to wish everybody to have a safe Memorial Day weekend or holiday, whichever way you want to look at it. And I'd like to thank all the past and present veterans that helped defend and make our country safe for us. I think that's what this Memorial Day is coming up is about, so I want to thank them very much. So thank them for their service. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Mr. Blair, you're up to bat. Thank you, sir. Also, thank you, Natalie, for your information to the city and to follow along with Mr. Schultz's comment about Memorial Day. I would encourage everybody to come to the Memorial Day service at the cemetery, Monday at ten o'clock. It's a very nice gathering. Paul Peterson, our senator, state senator is going to be speaking and your presence to all of the veterans would be greatly appreciated. And then I've got a comment here, Mr. Chairman, from of all people, B.B. King.
You going to play the guitar too?
Well, you don't want to hear that.
All right, guys. What B.B. said?
Okay. He says, "We are here because there are things that need our help, like the planet, like each other, like animals. The world is like a garden and we are its protectors." That's all I have, sir.
Amen, Mr. Blair and B.B.
And B.B.
Mr. Christman?
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, Natalie. I appreciate the pictures. Is the only sidewalk there on North Street, there's none on Paint?
Oh, no, it's just there on both sides, both sides.
And it's totally covered with grass or whatever that is on Paint Street? I don't know. I'm not fussy about the city, but I always thought if it's on the sidewalk, it needs to be cut back to the edge because we did that right down the street with some shrubs a few years ago because the owner or the caretaker came in and raised heck with us for cutting it back too much. But stick it out in the way, you cut them off. Anyway, I'm sure they are able, attorney, not that one, this one over here will take care of it.
I guess it's an attorney, he thought that you're right about that.
That's what I always thought. Now, I'm not an attorney and I don't read law books, so. Anyway, thanks for coming and see if we can get something done, hopefully.
Thank you.
I'm sure we will. Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Christman?
That's all. Oh, have a nice holiday, everybody. Thanks over here between the lines.
Every, just want to mention a couple things. Every month we get a report from the police department and I'm amazed, every month when I look at this, the activity that our police department goes through. And I have to say, I greatly appreciate those people in their blue uniforms or blacks and thugs who serve our community. They are obviously very busy and I appreciate it. Second, on a somber note, having been the Safe and Drug Free School Coordinator for our schools for several years, anytime I hear, see, read about a school shooting, it breaks my heart. it breaks my heart. It's hard to even talk about. It's bad enough when somebody walks into a grocery store and shoots people. It's bad enough when somebody walks into a church, shoots people, it's bad enough when people walk into movie theaters and anywhere else that there have been shootings. But to walk into a school and shoot second, third, and fourth graders, I feel so bad for those families and all those students who have to live with this that didn't get killed. Anyway, I don't know what can be done, but something needs to be done, we have way too many shootings in this country. To end on a good note, the Washington Blue Lions are district champions. I got word that they won their game with Sheridan High School tonight, three to nothing. And will be playing in the regional, that means there's just eight teams left in the state. We have to win four games, and we are state champions.
Wow.
Uh, from what I've heard from my son, we, we think we play next Thursday and Friday, and I'm not sure about that, and I know that it's in Ashville. Not in Ashville. Taze Valley High School is actually where it is, and that's where Taze Valley High School is. And so I want to congratulate the Blue Lion baseball team and their coach, Mark Schwartz. And, uh, I'm hoping that one of these days in the near future, we can have the team in and congratulate them on all their success. So, anyway, uh, having said that, thank you for coming in, Ms. Wentworth. And more importantly, thank you for staying and being here for the meeting, we love to have the public come in and, and, uh, sit in, so thank you very much. And so with that, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a mo- motion to adjourn.
Second.
There you go. And Jim, Christman, seconds. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned.